Charlie, I believe we have quorum and we're up on YouTube. Attendees are present whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you ma'am. Chloe, I'm correct, there's very little public comments.
Correct, we have applicant signed up to speak for the rezoning and for the second zoning, but other than that, no one has signed up to speak or submitted comment.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and get started then. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Charleston Planning Commission meeting of June the 16th, 2021. So everyone knows the planning commission members are volunteers and appointed by Charleston City Council. And I know you joined me in thanking them for their work on behalf of the City of Charleston. For the record, since we're meeting by Zoom, I'll read the names of the commission members who will be attending today with us. Mr. Jimmy Bailey, Ms. Akita Bryant Jenkins, Ms. Erica Harrison, Ms. John Jacobs, Mr. Harry LaSane, who is the vice chairman, and my name is Charlie Caris, the chairman. The way we do things is we read an item into the record. And then we ask staff to address that item, make a recommendation. After that, we'll ask the applicant to speak. And then we'll ask anyone in favor of an application if they'd like to speak or anyone opposed to the application. And after that, we'll ask the applicant if they want to address any issues that came up. After that, we will close the public aspect of that and commission members will discuss and make a motion and we'll move forward to the next item. So, Mr. Morgan, would you please introduce, Christopher Morgan, would you please introduce anybody from your staff that will be participating in the meeting today?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. I'm Christopher Morgan, planning manager here at the City of Charleston. Also presenting this evening will be Lee Batchelder, our zoning administrator. He's got some zoning ordinance amendments and subdivision code amendments. Helping us out tonight is, of course, Chloe Stubber, who is handling, running the meeting. And Philip Overcash is also here handling tech issues. And of course, our clerk is Marcy Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, and again, I want to thank the staff for the excellent job they do. We've been working on city plan and they've been working very hard on that. We're not here to discuss that today, but we'll be discussing it next week. But I want to thank you all the staff for their great work. The first item on the agenda, number one on the rezonings is 584 Meeting Street, East Central Peninsula, TMS number 4590103045, approximately 1.623 acres, request rezoning from GB, General Business, Mixed Use Workforce Housing, MU, that's two WH. Mr. Morgan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is a property that has been used as a church. The church was built, I think, sometime in the last 20 years. And I believe there are going to be members of the congregation, or at least the pastor from the congregation is going to be on tonight to tell you all a little bit about what they're doing here and what the church's interest is. But the request is to go to our MU workforce housing, MU2WH, which you see surrounding this property in a number of locations. I hope you all can see my cursor, but to the northwest, at the corner of UG and Meeting is MU2WH. Further to the west are other parcels, again, with the crosshatch here of MU2WH. And to the south is MU1WH. And the properties are going this way because this is an area of the city that we are interested in seeing have some density in it because it's along the new Low Country Rapid Transit. And so this is the right place in the city for density. In our comprehensive plan, at present, we show it as urban core. And of course, in our new comprehensive plan that's coming out, it's going to be showing as part of the city centers area. And it's definitely an area that's a little bit higher than other parts of the downtown. And coupled with the mass transit coming through there right to this front door, literally of these folks, because of the new stop that will be as part of the Low Country Rapid Transit along UG Street. It's a very opportune site to have a more mixed use project. I'll show you some images of the location. Here is an aerial and you see the large Meeting Street Lofts at the corner of UG and Meeting. And then there is the elements, apartments and mixed use here. And then there's another one, I think it's called the Porter, is over here. And then the Housing Authority is actually working, partnering with a private developer to redevelop these townhouses. They're behind the grant homes and they're going to have a number of new market rate and affordable units in a new building constructed here. And then you've got other things going on, such as a hotel and office building approved at the northeastern corner of UG and Meeting. And you've got new restaurants in this area. So a whole lot of new things happening up here and revitalization of the area, of course, to the south. You've got another future mixed use development that's going through the BAR process now too. Here is an actual oblique image of the property. And you see the current sanctuary and then they were working on an addition on the site and that has not been finished yet. And then we see a street view of the property. And here is a view of the property to the south. It's going to be a new mixed use development. It's a former milk factory to the south. And here's looking to the north and you see the Meeting Street Lofts development at UG going across the street here and Meeting Street going north, south. And then looking to the rear, you see Stewart Street and the back of the current church on the property here. And that is the presentation on this one and staff of recommending approval of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, I believe this was, if I'm wrong, this was an article in the Post and Courier on this recently, is that correct?
That is correct, and it has had a first reading at city council. So the city council is aware of it and they were needing to get started in the TRC process. And so they had a first reading at city council and they can kind of tell you a little bit about their timeframe when their development team gets on this, this meeting.
Thank you. Chloe, is the applicant with us or the pastor, whoever is going to speak?
Yes, Jeffrey, whenever you're ready. We do not yet have Dwayne or Pastor Robinson on the line.
I think they said they were on the line and had called in on the audio on the phone.
Jeffrey, you go, Mr. Roberts, you go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yeah, well, thank you, Chloe, Christopher, that was a very informative and thorough presentation. And thank you, Mr. Carish and fellow board members. Just give you a little background on this. The Eastside Missionary Baptist Church had been planning moving off the peninsula for actually a few years. This was not even on our radar screen and just give you a little, little background for the optics. They were in a contract with a wholly unrelated suitor for about a year. And right before the closing, the suitor walked away from this with pressing obligations that the church had to make good before the end of the year, based on some environment, some late discovered environmental issues. So we had been friendly with, with the church as represented by attorney Dwayne Green. And there were critical issues that were upon the church and we had the ability to sort of right the ship, deal with the environmental issues that DEHEC got involved with and in conjunction with the environmental partners at Nelson Mullins and our, and our environmental engineering firm SES. We were able to at least get rid of the church's pressing financial obligation to work through the environmental and then be able to roll up, roll up the property. But this was a situation that came to us just again on, on the basis of sort of the church sending up the bat signal at the last minute. And they were planning on moving off the peninsula for a few years. As a matter of fact, we are intimately involved because we get along so well with the church in designing, engineering, planning and constructing their new facility at Cross County Road and Dorchester Road, where most of the parishioners now live. So it's a really, really good story to get back on what, what, and we also let the church now use the property for their Sunday services until, you know, further, until further notice. So it's a great story of mutual collaboration. In the meantime, I think just to augment what Mr. Morgan said, this is now, you know, urban core and center city. This, this property is uniquely suitable for, for mixed use. We have a great plan, great perspective design, and we just needed to get this, get this zoning completed through planning commission and city council to achieve those efforts and finish off further levels of TRC and BAR. So if there's any questions that the board has, happy to answer anything. And I know, I know Mr. Green and Pastor Robinson may have a word to say as well. There's no questions.
If anyone else would like to speak from your team, that's great. If not, we're okay with that too. So, you know, when I first read about this, I had just a comment that I knew I was telling Mr. Morgan. I said, I hate to see when churches leave the city. But apparently this church hadn't been really active in the city for a while and they've been planning to leave the city for a while, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Roberts?
Yes, this, this was in no way on our radar screen whatsoever. As a matter of fact, the only reason or the only way we got involved in it is that the church had been planning on using these proceeds for something. And the suitor had backed away at the 11th hour and 59th minute. So the church reached out to me based on knowing me and we were able to solve the issue quickly and, and work all together and deal with the environmental issues, deal with DEHEC, fulfill their obligations and actually assist them in, in building and designing the new facility, which they had identified long before.
Thank you. So if no one else is from the applicant, applicant team is, needs to speak unless they need to. Has any, are they available? Again, they don't need to speak, I just want to.
They're not, no one else is showing on the line.
I don't know that they need to speak.
Yes. Yeah, we'll move on.
Chair, Chair Carish, this is Andy Gouda. I am the legal counsel for 584 Meeting. I don't have anything else to add, but I am here to answer any questions that the, the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gouda, for being with us. I don't think Chloe, no one signed up to speak or there's no written comments on that, correct? On this application?
That's correct.
Okay, so that being the case, we'll close the public hearing on this and I'll ask if there's any questions, comments or motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this, please.
With Ms. Jacobs moves to approves, is there a second to the motion?
I will second.
I don't, I don't want to cut, is this Bryant Jenkins, is that you?
That'll be fine.
I don't want to cut you off, Harry, but I knew you. So Ms. Jacobs made a motion to approve, Ms. Bryant Jenkins seconded. Any other comments, questions? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bryant Jenkins?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Harrison? Ms. Harrison, you with us? She's with us, we'll go on to Ms. Jacobs.
Aye in favor.
Great. Mr. LaSane?
Aye in favor.
I'm in favor as well. Ms. Harrison, are you with us? If not.
Mr. Chairman, I think she's recused from this.
Okay, all right, we'll get her to sign a form on that. So thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Roberts. So that being the case, there's five in favor and none opposed, so this motion passes.
Charlie, Charlie.
I'm sorry, son.
Charlie, I'm on the phone call, so I, that's okay. I vote, I vote.
Great, Ms. Lampisus, I'm sorry, I didn't know you wanted, so Ms. Lampisus votes in favor as well. If I missed anybody else, if not, that'd be six in favor and none opposed, so this application passes. Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for your work.
Thank you for the, thank you, bye.
Thank you.
The next item on the attendance is ordinance amendments. And I'm just, I'm not going to read all the tax numbers. I'm just going to read the start of this, amend chapter 54 of the Code of City of Charleston zoning ordinance to create a specific parking district overlay or zone for the purpose of eliminating minimum off-street parking requirements applicable to certain uses within the district and change the zone map, which is part thereof. So the property is designation designated as Charleston County and it has TMS numbers, probably 30 of them, which I'm not going to read, but I guess it will be in the record and on the agenda. I guess that'll suffice. Mr. Morgan, is this Mr. Batchelder going to present on this?
It is.
Lee, will you go ahead whenever you're ready?
Yes, thank you, good evening, everybody. So, back in, I guess it was late last year, we were still in this COVID situation and thinking about how we might help businesses on King Street and help those properties on King Street as well. And, and so we, in January, adopted an emergency ordinance under the authority that the, that local governments have to basically exempt all properties on King Street between Calhoun and Broad from any parking requirements. And that's the buildings on those properties, not the properties themselves. So that is helpful in a couple ways. Number one, it, of course, allows projects to move forward with, without that question about, do I have to provide parking or not? And it allows the staff to be much more helpful in moving those projects forward because anytime we get a new business wanting to open on King Street or a proposal about changing the occupancy or something like that, we have to first stop and think, okay, is there a parking requirement? And we might have to research that requirement. And we might have to require that applicant to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals to see whatever type of approval is necessary. All of that is time consuming. And we just felt like this would be a way to, to help those properties and get them occupied. So we came up with this ordinance. It exempts properties on that, shown on that map, that's part of this ordinance, from all parking requirements for the buildings on those properties as of November of last year. And so you can see it applies to all the properties that front on King Street, except for the county property, which is the courthouse and the, the register of deeds and the parking garage down there, which we didn't feel was necessary for, to be included in this. They have their parking in that garage. So, so that's basically the ordinance was, took effect in January. It's been used probably three or four times so far. Many, many properties are already grandfathered. That is to say that they've had occupancies that did not provide any parking. And so continuation of that is possible without going through any hoops. But it's still a question that we have to try and figure out whenever there is a new business license application or a proposal for one of these properties. So it helps in lots of ways. But that was the emergency ordinance, we want to make this permanent. It's been well received. Haven't been any complaints from any or concerns expressed by any neighborhoods that I'm aware of. City council members support it. The emergency ordinance has been extended, I think, a couple of times. And we want to make it permanent and to do that, we need your recommendation for approval and city council's approval. City council has already given this ordinance first reading approval back in May. So you're up tonight and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Batchelder. Chloe, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anyone signed up to speak or written comments on this?
That's correct.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Charlie, you're muted.
I'm, I'm sorry, got it. So, so that'll close the public aspect to this. Any questions of commission members to Mr. Batchelder, discussion or motion?
Mr. Bailey? I have a question. I, I support this, just, and you may have said this, I got distracted for a second. Is there anything different between the permanent ordinance and the emergency ordinance?
No, this is the exact same ordinance.
Charlie, if there are questions, go ahead and take them. Otherwise, I'd make a motion to approve.
Well, we can still have discussion, even if you make a motion. So I'm gonna accept your motion, Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Jacobs?
I'll second that motion and I just would like to say for the record that this is an exciting way to relook at a situation and rejuvenate some economic development along King Street after a very tough year. And I'm, I'm glad that we're looking at things creatively and I'm happy to second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs, and I've heard nothing but, I was on King Street today and heard nothing but positive things about this moving forward. So other discussion, questions? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Great, Ms. Bryant Jenkins?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Harrison? Got Ms. Harrison back with us. I'll come back to her. Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Thanks. Ms. Lampisus?
Aye in favor.
Thank you. Mr. LaSane?
Aye in favor.
Great, I'm in favor as well. Ms. Harrison, are you back with us? I don't want to cut you off if you're not, but if not, it's, that's six in favor and none opposed. So that passes. The next item is ordinance amendments, number two, an ordinance to amend Article 8 subdivision property line adjustments or abandonment, Part 3 subdivision design standards, section 54-821, street design standards of chapter 54 of the Code of the City of Charleston zoning ordinance and add requirements for, for on-street parking and new subdivision. Mr. Batchelder?
Thank you. So in the zoning ordinance, we also include our subdivision standard. And so any new neighborhoods that get constructed in the city have to meet these requirements. It includes requirements about the design, design requirements for lots or streets for easements or all sorts of things related to the subdivision of property. And I think the subdivisions are so extremely important that we get right. When we take a large parcel of land and divide it and sell it off and create these streets for these lots, we're essentially creating a pattern of development that will exist for a very long time. Those kinds of patterns don't change. Streets don't suddenly get wider or narrower or lots don't necessarily move from one side of the, you know, you know what I mean? It's, you're subdividing and selling off individual pieces of that development. So the streets that serve those lots become extremely, extremely important. And I know in the past, there have been proposals that have come through the planning commission for your approval to subdivide properties and create new streets, create new neighborhoods. And there have been concerns and questions about, is there enough on-street parking? Is there enough public parking basically for these new residential developments? And we don't really have anything in our zoning ordinance that specifically gives us the authority to say, yes, you've got to provide some on-street parking. We have different street design standards with regard to the width of the pavement and the type of curbs and the width of the right of way and all that sort of thing. We don't have anything that specifically sets a minimum for on-street parking. And, and so we get in these conversations with these engineers and developers about trying to get them to provide on-street parking. Many will do that, many will modify their plans if they haven't already provided those spaces and include them. But sometimes they, they fight us and they say, well, where is it in the ordinance that says I have to do that? Well, we want to add something that, very simple amendment to the ordinance that adds those requirements and sets some very minimum standards that we think are reasonable, given the different lot sizes that you find. Smaller lots typically don't have enough room or very much room for more than the two spaces that are typically required for new residential lots. So excess parking, when events take place at homes and you've got guests coming over and that sort of thing, you know, there's always going to be some need for some of that within a neighborhood, some of that on-street parking. And, and, and so this is an attempt to try and respond to the needs that we've seen over time. We've got some neighborhoods where we clearly did not provide enough room on the street for parking. And it is a problem. It's a problem for our fire department. It's a problem for the police department when people park illegally and, and create an issue. The problem for Department of Traffic and Transportation, who has to figure out how to sign neighborhoods after the fact to properly restrict parking and keep streets open and clear for the necessary access. So we want to avoid those situations in the future by having this minimum standard for parking. And basically, what we're proposing with this ordinance is two different requirements for smaller lots being. For smaller lots being lots less than six thousand square feet in size, we would want one space for every three lots. And if the lots are between six thousand and nine thousand square feet, then we want one space for every four lots. We've been applying that standard on these projects for some time now. We feel like that's a reasonable standard. We don't want to have wide streets, just to have wide streets because that creates challenges in other ways. We don't like all that paving. We don't like all of the drainage and runoff that that creates drainage issues and runoff. So maintenance issues down the road for the city. So we want to strike some sort of a balance. And so that's what we're proposing tonight. We're also in this ordinance, setting the minimum pavement width and minimum right-of-way width requirements for those streets with on-street parking. And we're giving the option to people, to these developers, to provide the parking, not on on the street, but in community parking lots that would be along the right-of-way. Some neighborhoods will use this kind of parking creatively. Those lots become HOA property maintained and owned by the HOA. They can be landscaped. We were proposing that those would be, could even be, instead of a hard surface, impervious paving could be something that's more pervious to help with runoff. So this is the minimum standard that we're proposing in this ordinance. I've included a lot of the language from the ordinance, just so you can see how it fits in. If you want to read that and and see what our current standards are. I felt like that was probably necessary to to help people understand how this new requirement would fit into the existing requirement. So that's in effect the the ordinance that we're proposing. And we hope that you'll recommend approval of it tonight. There may be, another thing is I'm, we're using, we're coming up with these requirements based on our experience. And that's not just the experience of looking at the plans on paper, but also looking at the actual results. And it's not uncommon for people to even provide more parking than is required under this new ordinance. So but we want to have a minimum standard that we can point to and say, this is the requirement. And we expect you to follow it to get the approval of the city.
Thank you, Lee. And you talk about experience and changing things in the city. And you you've been involved with the city for a long time. And we appreciate your work and you're going through this and explaining that to us as thoroughly as you did. We appreciate it. No one has signed up to speak and there's no written comments. That being the case, we'll close the public aspect of this. And I'd ask commission members if there's any questions, comments or motion.
Lee, this is Sunday. I have a question. My phone bleeped out for a second. Did you say that it is allowed in the right-of-way possibly?
The on-street parking would be parking within the right-of-way.
Okay. That's what I thought you said. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Lempesis. Any other questions, comments or motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lasain, you go ahead.
Thank you. Lee, I'm I'm curious as to how sort of, I know for a number of years, there's been a move in the development community to to move towards narrower streets for traffic calming and, as you mentioned, for, you know, reducing runoff and so forth. How do we sort of, you know, this is a balancing act, I guess. And and how does this ordinance handle that balance?
Well, that's a good question. And what I'll start with is the history of street width requirements in the city. Because when I first started working in the city in the eighties, the requirements in the zoning ordinance called for extremely wide streets. So if you look back and you were to look at neighborhoods that were constructed in the city in the nineteen eighties and even in the early nineties, you would see extremely wide neighborhood streets. Probably the the most glaring example of a excessive street width requirement that we had back then was Bayview Farms on James Island. It's a neighborhood that was probably developed in the late eighties is what I I'm going to guess and say. But it was in that period of time when we had these wider street requirements, street paving requirements. I can't remember what they were. I think I think they may have been that neighborhood streets had to be, had to have a twenty-eight-foot paving width. And then you add the curbs to that. And the minimum right-of-way, I think, was fifty feet. And and that was this minimum width of the street everywhere in the neighborhood. Now we've got a twenty-two-foot pavement width. And and then you add the curbs to that. So that's a big change from the twenty-eight. And and so we started there. And then in the early nineties, the planning department said, we gotta, we gotta change this. This is ridiculous. We're we're really creating ugly neighborhoods, basically. We don't like the big wide asphalt streets. We need to do something different. And I actually put the presentation together. I I remember looking at existing neighborhoods that had the wide streets and the existing neighborhoods that had more reasonable streets and, of course, downtown streets. And we we argued internally about this for a while. And I I remember having a meeting in Mayor Riley's office where our former director of our traffic and transportation department was there and the planning staff was there. And and luckily, the mayor sided with us. So that's all I'll say. And we we narrowed the streets well. And it's worked well, but I think we we forgot about the need for on-street parking. So I don't think this will make a dramatic difference in increasing street widths within neighborhoods. I think there are creative ways to do the parking that we're requiring without going back to where we were before. But I think it's still an important part of a new neighborhood because you just end up with these problems with. And there's a neighborhood on the Johns Island called the cottages where the parking situation is really terrible. And there are cars scattered all over the street, straddling the curbs, parking partly on the the verge where the that green strip of landscaping that you see along the curb where trees are planted. So we've got to do something to find a middle ground. I think this, that's what this does.
Very good. Thank you. That's that was a good explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Lasain. And thank you, Mr. Batshelder. Any other comments, questions or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lasain. Mr. Lasain moves for approval. Is there other discussion or a second?
I have a question, Charlie.
Ms. Lempesis, you go ahead.
One of the neighborhoods that we obviously had a really difficult time with, Lee, was Carolina Bay with the townhouse project. Is there any special or additional parking required for townhomes that are obviously less than a six thousand square foot lot?
Well, those would be the that would fall under the requirement for one space for every three lots, right?
So there would not be any increased parking for a townhouse?
Well, there would be the two spaces on off-street that are required for each lot plus the on-street requirement. So that would increase. The other thing is the width of the streets. I don't think we had a requirement that was really sufficient at that time to deal with the on-street parking that they may have provided on the street. So this also sets forth a required minimum that that we've been applying for years, actually, when we can.
Okay. And the second question, are delivery trucks? That are we going to make any consideration for the future in light of the fact that delivery trucks are on the roads and taking up a lot of neighborhood space when they come in and out and park illegally?
Well, hopefully, they would use the on-street parking that would be available with this new requirement. But as we know, they don't necessarily park where they're supposed to park. And since they're only there for a short period of time, I don't think that's, I don't think that is necessarily the the reason for figuring out what what the parking requirement should be. I think that's such a temporary type thing that I wouldn't want to go overboard trying to accommodate them.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lempesis and Mr. Batshelder. We have a motion by Mr. Lasain. Any other comments or second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. If there's no other questions or comments, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
I in favor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bryant Jenkins?
I in favor.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Harrison? We'll come back to you. Ms. Jacobs?
I in favor.
Great. Ms. Lempesis?
I in favor.
Great, Mr. Lasain?
I in favor.
And I'm in favor as well. And I'm assuming Ms. Harrison and with us. So that being the case, it's six in favor and none opposed. We're going to zonings. First one is four-twenty Arlington Drive, a portion, West Ashley, Oakland, TMS number three-one-oh-one, two-zero-zero-zero-eight-three, possibly twenty, point-two-five acres. Request zoning of, excuse me, single-family residential SR one zone, single-family residential R four in Charleston County. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yes, this is an area that when we brought properties in from the county, they've generally been the SR one. That's the closest compatible district and most appropriate in this area. And we are recommending for the SR one in this location.
I don't think anyone's, Chloe signed up to speak on this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Great, thank you. And that'll close the public aspect of this. And I'd ask commission members questions or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Other questions or a second?
I'll second it, Charlie.
Thank you, Ms. Lempesis. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
I in favor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bryant Jenkins?
I in favor.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Jacobs?
I in favor.
Ms. Lempesis?
In favor.
Mr. Lasain?
I in favor.
And I'm in favor as well. And again, I'm just assuming Ms. Harrison and what they said she had answered. So that'd be six in favor and none opposed. The second item, and I believe the last item on the agenda, is zonings number two, two-one-four-seven, two-one-five-one River Road, Johns Island, TMS number three-one-five-oh-oh-oh-oh-one, one-zero and oh-four-eight, approximately four-point-seven-eight acres. Request zoning of single-family residential SR one. It was on R four in Charleston County. Mr. Morgan?
Okay. And so these properties are Down River Road, across the street from, almost across the street from the entrance to Development in Charleston County, Olivia Marie Lane, I believe it may be known as Waterloo Estates, but I may be wrong. And then it's immediately adjacent to the south to the Stono View Planned Unit Development. And as the chairman stated, it was R four in Charleston County. Now, when we look at this, you know, it, there is a bit of an anomaly, I think, in the current plan that shows it as suburban designation. However, we are increasingly concerned with density issues on the eastern side of River Road. In the new plan, this is an area that's being shown as our suburban edge, which would be no greater densities than four units an acre. And SR one is four-point-eight units an acre. So from a staff standpoint, we are recommending only for RR one, which is essentially three and a half units an acre. And I'll I'll show you how we think that that's a good compromise in this location. The Stono View development here, despite the the smaller lots, its overall density is about two-point-six units or two-point-three units an acre. So even below three units an acre for Stono View. And it's a fairly large development. But again, because it has so much open space, its density is not that great. For instance, you can see some of the the open space right here, you know, in the middle of this area here. You know, big open shared space and and other spaces here and buffers and things like that. And so our feeling was that that really three and a half units an acre with RR one was better here. We really don't have any SR one this far down River Road. And I checked all the west, rest of the way down River Road. And there is not any SR one would be denser than the county's R four that you see a lot of in here. And it's definitely denser than the RR three of the county across the street. So we felt pretty strongly that RR one is the best density here. Here you see the property with an aerial, of course, River Road is running through here. You can see the Stono View development. And again, this, it does have smaller lots, but there's a lot more open space, ponds, things like that in Stono View. So the overall net density is much lower. And we are recommending for zoning this RR one and recommend that to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. And 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 just to clarify, because I read SR one, so it's RR one, it's R four in Charleston County.
Well, my recommendation is for RR one. Yes, sir.
RR one, thank you, sir. No one has signed up to speak on this, I believe. Chloe, is that correct?
That's correct. But the applicant is here to speak as as they are requesting SR one. So I'm
So the applicant is requesting SR one. She wants to speak, we'll go in here for her, from her now. Ms. Beckford? Is she with us?
But that's the home, the property owner, the applicant is actually Evan Diamond. And Evan, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Diamond, you go ahead.
Oh, there we go. Hi, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I would like to do, I would like to propose that we do SR one for this property for several reasons. I've been working with Philip Overcash. I'm, I've been a builder in Charleston for fifteen years. And I'm not sure if you can see me. I do have a couple of photos. Can you see my video?
Chloe, do we have?
If you can. We we have our, this, the presentation shared right now. Mr. Diamond typically request any images you want to show ahead of time, but Christopher?
It's okay. I can I can verbally describe it.
Okay.
So I'm a custom builder. I've been building here in Charleston for fifteen years. We are not production builders. I look at this tract as an enclave. We plan to do a really tasteful subdivision with lots of three-quarters of an acre to a half an acre. And we do not plan on doing with, we've already spoken with the bank and and that is what has been approved to do. So we have no interest in doing more than that amount of homes on this property, which would put us, you know, well, I think, you know, it would put us well below even RR one standards. But saying that, the reason I do want to do SR one, as I said, this is going to be more of an enclave. These homes are going to be, you know, million-dollar-plus homes on larger lots. I also potentially would like to do accessory buildings in the back, pool houses. So RR one with the thirty-five-foot accessory setback in the rear could limit these properties that would, that maybe would have a detrimental effect for the potential buyer to do a pool house or, you know, an another structure, which we may do during construction or they could add later. Again, we have no interest in doing, you know, for, you know, what was zoned SR four. It's way above and beyond what we're planning on doing. So the thirty-five-foot side setback So the 35-foot side setback in the RR1 for express accessory structures is what I'm concerned about. The other thing I'm concerned about is the RR1 50-foot front setback. You know, we have not gone to TRC yet, and I have a pre-app meeting on the 7th. But I do, I, as we move through stormwater and as you showed on the map of Stono View, there's many ponds and open space. This is high ground. It is an X-zone. We may have to do a pond. And what I'm concerned about is if a retention pond's required. And we are still also working out our access, whether it be from River Road or, or through the Stono River subdivision. We have an easement off of Battle Trail. That is what we would like to use is the Battle Trail easement access. But I'm concerned that with the front setback and, and are unknown of what the entrance is going to be, that not, that those setback issues are really my big, my big reason for wanting SR1 and not RR1. It has nothing to do with density. It's, it's purely setbacks. If I can answer any other questions, that's the, that is the, the majority of the reason for SR1.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. I hope I said your name correctly.
Yes.
No one else has signed up to speak, I don't believe, Chloe. But I'd like Mr. Morgan to briefly tell us again, just so it's very clear to us, the differences in RR1 and SR1. And since the city's recommending SR1, would he like to respond to anything? I mean, we're recommending RR1. Would he like to reply at all?
You know, again, this is an area of Johns Island that has been very sensitive. And, and the, the development of Stono View Development next door, PUD, has been a little bit controversial, even though it's very low density because of fill issues and things like that. And I think we've got to be very careful in this area. And that's why our new plan shows it as, you know, the suburban edge. And we feel like I think Mr. Diamond has every intent to do the eight lots he's talking about. And that's great. And I think eight lots fits in here very nicely. But we don't have any way of requiring that it just be eight lots with the SR1. You know, he could later sell the property and somebody else could come in and put many more lots than that on the site. So while I think he has every intention of doing that himself and will do a good job of it, the, the zoning runs with the land, no matter who owns it. And so that's our big concern. And setting the precedent, getting SR1 this far down on River Road would be, you know, a big precedent as well. Some of the setbacks that Philip was just giving me some info here, some of the setbacks Mr. Diamond was talking about were, I think he may have been a little bit confused on a few of them because I think they were related to corner lot situations. He is correct about the 50-foot front setback versus 25 in SR1. But I think that some of the other setbacks were not necessarily as bad as he was thinking from, he was looking at from the side street as opposed from the front street. The accessory buildings are 60 feet in both SR1 and RR1. So there's no difference for the accessory buildings in.
Oh, okay. Mr. Morgan, could you tell me, what's the possible maximum density in SR1 versus SR1? I'm just, maybe I missed it?
Sure. SR1 is 4.8 units an acre. It's a 9,000-square-foot minimum lot. RR1 is 3.5 units an acre. It's a 12,500-square-foot minimum lot. So not a whole lot bigger minimum lot, but there are bigger setbacks because it's supposed to have a little bit more of a rural feel. And again, you know, I think eight lots sounds great on the site, but we have no way to hold them to that without, you know, a PUD or something like that. And I'm not suggesting this be a PUD. I think it's, his approach is a great one. It's just that we need that. My recommendation, our recommendation would be that that approach be taken through the RR1 zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. I don't think there's anyone else signed up to speak on this. So so is there questions, comments, motions of commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Jacobs?
I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommendation for RR1 because this is right up next to the urban growth boundary. We've had a lot of concerns on Johns Island, and I think we need to respect some of these concerns. So I'd like to move to, to accept staff's recommendation of RR1.
Thank you, ma'am. Other discussion or a second to the motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has his hand raised. I don't know if.
Okay. You know what?
To acknowledge him anymore.
You know what? Since Christopher spoke, and it was like a public, I asked for, I will get him, let him have one more word in because I think that's only fair. So Mr., sir, you go ahead and speak one more time, if you wouldn't, and answer any objections or raise your concerns by staff.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. And I can keep it very brief. The only other thing I wanted to raise is that my property is surrounded by SR1 on, on all sides up to River Road. So, you know, I, I do, I am a conservationist. I understand sprawl. I don't want it to happen. I'm not going to do it to this property. But I feel that I am within a boundary. I'm an island inside SR1. So it's already been granted. And that, that's the only other point I would like to make that, you know, you mentioned there's a boundary, but I'm in, I'm an island inside of SR1. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. So there's a motion by Ms. Jacobs, a second by Ms. Bryant Jenkins. Other discussion before I do roll call votes and the applicant, the applicant spoke? Is any other comments, questions? If not, we'll do a roll call vote.
Chairman, can I clarify something?
Yes, sir. Mr. Morgan, you go ahead.
Said he was surrounded by SR1, and that is absolutely not correct. To the north, the property in the county is R4. That's four units an acre in Charleston County. To the south is the PUD that I discussed, the Stono View. And that's, I think, about 2.3 units an acre in the city of Charleston. And that's also to the east side. And then across the street, RR3, which is a rural residential category in Charleston County. So there is no SR1 at all on this map. And no SR1 further down River Road either.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, for clarifying that. So there is a motion by Ms. Jacobs, second by Ms. Bryant Jenkins. Any other discussion of commission members? If not, I'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just explain, explain the reason that I'm voting in favor of this motion. And that is, Mr. Morgan brought up, and I, and I have every confidence in Mr. Diamond's plan and that he is genuinely committed to the plan that he discussed, which I agree with him is the right one for this property and for this part of Johns Island. However, you know, this commission's charge is to look at the zoning, which runs with the land, which changes the, the way development will unfold on this property, no matter who the developer is. And so while we have confidence in him, and, and I take him at his word, my job is to, is to look at the zoning and determine what, what is appropriate for this part of the city. And, and I concur with staff's recommendation. So that's the reason for my vote.
Thank you, Ms. LaSane. And a good point you make that whatever we do, the property's zoned, whoever is the next owner, if there's another owner, they have those rights within that. So good point. If there's no other questions or comments, I'll do a roll call vote. Again, the motion was to zone the property RR1 as per staff recommendation. A motion by, by Ms. Jacobs, second by Ms. Bryant Jenkins. Mr. Bailey?
I am in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant Jenkins.
I in favor.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Jacobs?
I in favor.
Great. Ms. Lepusus? Sunday, you with us? I'm going to come back to her. Mr. LaSane?
I in favor.
Great. Ms. Lepusus, one more time. I knew you on the road, so you made a, had to drop off.
I in favor, Charlie. Sorry, I did.
That's all right. You're worth waiting for. But thank you. And I'm in favor as well. So that's six in favor and none opposed. I believe that is the agenda. And we appreciate every staff and every, all the commission members' time tonight. And I look forward to seeing you all next Wednesday at 5 o'clock for our special meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.